Can't wait to hear.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
The call to order, this Mayor Commission Work Session. Today is Monday, September 23rd, 2024, and the time is 10:00 a.m. And by the look of things, I guess we have quite a bit to discuss. All right, so we'll start with Strategic Planning Priority Projects Update. I see Ms. Johnson there, but it says Jose Luis, so...
Yes, Mayor, good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner's staff. Before I turn it over to Mr. Rodriguez, Mayor, I just want to ask if we can take a 10-minute break after we get through item number two, so I can get teed up for item number three.
That is granted.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Jose Rodriguez, Assistant City Administrator. And this morning, I'm going to be giving you an update, providing an update on the strategic plan priority projects. By way of a reminder, 17 different projects were identified in the current strategic plan when it was developed. Then, at the August 29th, 2022 work session, one plan, the Okeechobee Palm Beach Lakes Business Development Revitalization Plan, was deleted. So that left 16 priority projects tied to the strategic plan, which span across five different strategic pillars of the plan. By way of a refresher, the 16 projects are up there on the screen. I'm not going to go through all of them, but as you can see, you have Curry Park Infrastructures, the Seawall Master Plan, redevelopment of the South Dixie Corridor, just to name a few, increase affordable workforce housing units by 20%. The rest of the plans are there as well, development of the golf site, MWBE funding increases, and reducing speeding on Australian Avenue, and police enforcement of vagrancy and panhandling. So as of the 2023 Strategic Plan Update, nine of the 16 projects you were briefed on were completed, and those nine projects are there for your reference. Some of the big ones, as you can see there, development of the golf site, the assessment to determine the fire station staffing to achieve baseline coverages, again, the reducing of speeding on Australian and North Lake, increasing police enforcement and vagrancy of panhandling, implementations of the disparity study. So all of those were completed, which as of 2023, were at 56% completion on all those plans. That left seven plans that were in progress.
Seven projects.
I'm sorry, seven projects. I, okay, yes, seven projects. So out of those seven projects... Can I go back here? An additional three were completed as part of this 2024 update, so now we are down to only four projects that are in progress. The three that were completed were the funding of drainage and road improvements in Roosevelt Estates, working with schools and community-based organizations to develop technology, vocational education, and trades programs in schools, and creating a plan for redevelopment of the South Dixie Corridor. So as of today, we're 75% completed and 25% in progress. The plans that I'm going to focus on today are those seven plans that were still in the in-progress category as of 2023, and showing you the three that have moved into the completed section, and the four that remain in progress with an update for each one. The first update relates to pillar two, the built environment, and that is funding drainage and road improvements for Roosevelt Estates. This plan has now moved from in-progress to completed. As you can see, during FY '23, there was about $1.6 million, $1.7 million in projects related to Roosevelt Estates that was, that were expended. They consisted of a Seventh Street sanitary rehabilitation project, soil grading, and now in FY '24, there's going to be an additional $1.3 million spent on projects related to stormwater improvements on Seventh Street, and sewer replacements and repaving on Eleventh Street. So the total investment between FY '22 and FY '26, when all of these improvements are implemented, is going to be close to $12 million in that area. Moving on to pillar four, education, economy, and jobs. This is another one that was listed in progress that now moves to completed, and that is working with schools and community-based organizations to develop technology, vocational education and trades program in schools, and these are all the initiatives that have forward, that have taken place to forward that goal. As you were briefed a couple of months ago, the city participated with Bloomberg Philanthropies on the Youth Climate Action Fund Partnership, which is developing, which is working with youths age 15 to 24, to develop climate solutions using technological innovation, and those, that project aligns with our Sustainability Action Plan. In addition, the Mayor's Education Partnership Grant Program continues operational and funded, and that program provides up to $4,000 to support hands-on STEM education experiences to local schools within the city. The West Palm Beach Center for Arts and Technology Initiative is nearing the point where you will now be considering a funding agreement in the CRA Board Meeting in November, and that initiative is for the Northwest Training Area, the Northwest Area, to provide workers and businesses training within CRA projects. And Mr. Ruge confirmed for me that that should be on your agenda sometime in November. And the Mayor's Jump Start Academy continues to do its good work in integrating vocational education into the curriculum and providing micro-business owners with practical skills for career readiness, so that moves to the completed side of the ledger. Staying on with pillar four, creating a plan for redevelopment of the South Dixie Corridor. Some of the updates there, the continued coordination with FDOT has been successful. There is a project to repave Dixie between Okeechobee and Belvedere that will begin in 2026, and will consist of the following improvements that you see noted there, specifically, signalized pedestrian crosswalk near Flamingo Park will be added, school zones, school zone signage flashers at the Green School will be added, a bus bay pullout in front of the Norton Museum will also be added, and independent of the project with FDOT, FPL is upgrading 136 existing streetlights with both, the look is going to change to a decorative teardrop type pole, and they will be energy-efficient LEDs. And those streetlights, those 136 streetlights will be between Southern Boulevard and Gregory on Dixie, and they should be completed by the end of this year. And of course, everyone is anticipating the 8111 groundbreaking, which will occur in December 2024. I know that that's been a long, long and very planning-intensive initiative, but we are there. We're just a few weeks away.
A quick question, please, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Thank you so much for these updates. This is great. I was just curious if, I know we've had some discussion about the bulbouts along South Dixie, if any of that was considered in this project item.
I'll defer to Ms., uh, is Kevin here? Oh, or...
That's the Parks and Rec matter that happened on a number of occasions.
So this project is not, Leo Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation, this project that Jose Luis is speaking to is not a part of the bulbout. That is a part of our ongoing maintenance program, and we are working through some public-private partnerships with some of the businesses along the corridor to make some improvements.
Great, thank you so much.
Welcome.
President Ward?
Just knowing that, the FDOT project on Dixie, do you happen to know when that started, the planning started on it?
I believe it started, I'll defer to Mr. Volbrecht, but I believe that, that planning started over two years ago. It's been a couple of years of coordination and planning with FDOT.
Yeah, that, that's correct, Kevin Volbrecht, Engineering Director. The FDOT began the planning phases for these, this project sometime last year. They're going through their design program on it. We've been coordinating with them about that, and their work program is such that they're anticipating that they're going to start construction on this thing in 2026, and so that's where that's going. And a lot, some of the improvements that are being made there, we did want to try to improve the, the safety conditions right at Flamingo Drive where Green School is, because it previously was not a school zone designated, and they're going to go ahead and incorporate that. Plus, they're also going to signalize another pedestrian crosswalk just north of Park Place, so...
Follow-up, sorry. That's since I've come in. I'm just curious, because, you know, FDOT started in 2014 along Broadway, so why would this be, why, why do you think FDOT would be able to get this done so much faster, and I'm looking at a 2028 timeline on Broadway?
Well, first of all, Broadway got re, re, it got, went out of line and went, got back in line. Broadway has a lot more planning and development that needs to take place. This was strictly an FDOT project. It was a triple R, which is restoration, resurfacing, and renovation project. So they're basically going to repave it, but they're going to do a couple other things as well, so it's not like a, not going to be like a major reconfiguration of Dixie Highway. It's going to be just basically a lot of improvements of the existing conditions that are there, so it's strictly a, an FDOT's project, so that's why it was programmed that way. Those triple R projects go faster than one where we're trying to change the whole configuration of the roadway.
All right, thank you.
And also, I'd like to say too, the, the street lighting program, we're still currently working out all the details with FPNL on that. I'm going to need to take an agreement to the commission sometime in, hopefully in October, to get that executed so that we can get them started on that. And so we may or may not be able to finish that before the end of this year, but that's going to be coming to the commission here in the next month, so you can have an opportunity to see what's going to take place there. Okay? Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to share with my colleagues, I just got an email from FDOT over the weekend about a public meeting regarding this project. It will be held at the Norton Museum on Thursday, October 10th at 6:00 p.m., and there's also a Zoom link, so I'll have my aide send it around, but just to mention it to everyone who is interested. Thanks.
Okay. So moving on to pillar two, the built environment, developing a master plan for Broadway Avenue. This project remains in the in-progress category, but progress continues to be made. B-mud regulations are being developed to enhance the redevelopment of the corridor with a focus on prioritizing affordable housing, and the mixed-use district regulations are being updated to encourage development and workforce of affordable housing. And we expect a master plan update to be presented to the planning board in the fall of this year, so shortly we should see that. Staying on pillar two, the built environment, improving gateways into the community, Forest Hill, along Forest Hill and also the South End, that remains in progress, and progress continues to be made. The Parker Avenue Improvement Project is going out to bid, and we expect construction to begin in late of this year with completion by 2026. Traffic calming improvements on South Olive from Gregory Road to Forest Hill have also been made. Additional school crossing safety upgrades along that area have been implemented, and again, 8111 will include that gateway into the city on the West Palm Beach-Lake Worth border that will beautify that area and also help to achieve this goal. The last item is also on the built environment, the second pillar, and that's funding the Seawall Master Plan. Now, the total estimated cost of this plan is anywhere between $250,000 to $500,000. The reason why there is a range instead of a specific amount is because it will all depend on how much funding we get, how extensive the plan is. The minimum that we need to have the plan is $250,000, and we have that already budgeted. $150,000 came from the 2023 Resilient Florida Planning Grant, which we received, and the CRA budgeted the $100,000 to close that gap to get us to the $250,000 for the, to fund the parts of the plan that address areas within the CRA. But in addition to that, we have also applied for a 2024 National Coastal Resilience Fund grant, so if we get that grant, then we will then see how much money we have at the end of the day, and then it'll, that'll determine whether it's going to be a more basic but inclusive plan at the $250,000, or a more comprehensive, more intensive plan for the $500,000 as you get up to that level. And this is also an in-progress project, so that leaves four proj, four projects that will be in progress, or 25% of the total. By way of a fast recap, a quick recap, you can see there, all of the strategic priority plan projects, all the green ones noted as completed, the four that I just referred to, developing a master plan for Broadway Avenue, completing Curry Park infrastructure improvements, improving gateways into the community on Forest Hill on the South End, and the Seawall Master Plan, those are the four that remain in progress. And in this next slide is the remaining projects, which have all been completed as well.
Before you go off that last slide, a question from Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. When you were going through the slides, did, did we go over the complete Curry Park infrastructure improvements?
Uh, yes. That's an in-progress project, and I will... Right there.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we, yeah, and you can see there that we, we expect construction to begin early next year, and substantial construction completed in 2026.
Great, thank you.
President Ward?
On that same slide, and I know a lot of these are, no, 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 sorry, back to your completed and progress slide. A lot of these, obviously, it's a project, and then it gets completed. You know, the work with the schools and the community-based organizations, like, I think we, you know, Mayor, you've done a fabulous job with these programs, and I can't wait to share some of the feedback from the grants that the EAC provided. I just feel like, are we complete until all of our schools are A-schools? Like, when are we completed with that, working with schools and community-based organizations? I just feel like that's a difference. Are we going to look at pillars going forward? I just would hate to see that be dropped off as completed, because it's not done until our schools are top schools, in my opinion.
Well, I think it's completed in the sense that it was on the most recent strategic plan. When we go through another round of strategic planning, we can certainly discuss whether that's something we should continue to do. Okay, proceed. Thank you.
And I'm open for any questions, and the team is here for any questions as well, if you have any.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the updates. It's fantastic to see the progress, and I'm excited about seeing the other projects finished. I, as to your point, Mayor, I'm wondering, I think it was like maybe three years ago, right, when we all sat down in Gaines Park and went over the strategic plan, so I'm just wondering, as we have so many of these projects completed, do we have another one of those planning sessions on horizon, or what's the timeline for that?
Okay, I think that was probably a setup question from Ms. Johnson, because that's the next item.
It will be addressed in the next item.
Okay. That was a plan. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you for that, President. Now, can we get copies of that PowerPoint, please? Have that distributed to the commission, me and the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now to item two, introduction of LEAP Initiative, fiscal year '25 to fiscal year 2027 strategic planning schedule. Ms. Johnson?
He's pulling it up. Before I start in on strategic two, I don't want to be remiss and not thank the staff for the progress that have been made on completing the strategic projects that are in the current plan and the continued progress on those that are still underway. Now, before I start, I'm just going to take a walk down the runway.
Are you a model now? Oh, okay, all right. Yes, okay, L-E-A-P.
On this side, this side?
You didn't go through the whole...
Missed it over there.
They missed it over there.
Important commissioners on this side?
Walk slowly, Ms. Johnson. You need to put the hand on the hip thing, kind of?
Twirl around.
Right, do the twirl. If you're going to do it, do it right. Do it right. Okay, okay. Yes. Yes, yes.
Beautiful.
All right, and I see that all of the other members of the senior leadership team got the memo. I don't know who sent it out.
How'd you choose the color? Blue happens to be my favorite color.
That's probably why we chose it. Of course, that's how we chose it.
Good choice.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioner's staff, members of the public who happen to be watching this morning. I think this is probably the most excited that I have gotten outside of the budget process. And everyone knows that budget time is my favorite time, but this rises right to that level, because it gives me an opportunity to talk about our organization, our internal structure, which tends to not be the sexy part of what gets highlighted. Here, we have so many great things going on in the city. We're going through this incredible transformation when we look at the community, but for me, as the city administrator, we have a quiet transformation that has been taking place, and I'm just so excited that we're at this point to just kind of peak. I hope you're interested. We're not going to roll out the entire plan, but I wanted to give an introduction of what you're going to see in the next strategic plan, right, strategic planning process. So with that, I'm going to move right along. So the critically important, significant pillar eight is because it takes an inward look at our organization. When we look at the historic pillars that we had as part of our organization, they really look outward into the community, and were established based on the tenets of the U.S. Green Building Council, but pillar eight takes a look at how we do what we do internally. And from my perspective, that is very important. So if I just pause, and I don't want to go back down memory lane to when times were not so good, but I think it is important that we never lose sight of where we were in 2020, in 2020, coming off the heels of 2019. Our organization had gone through some very significant challenges, and we had a number of significant obstacles that we were dealing with from an organization standpoint, trying to come together and really define what we wanted to be as an organization and how we operated. The mayor has always talked about excellence throughout the organization, but we were in a different place back then. We have made light years of progress, but we can't rest on our laurels. So as we look at the vision for our community, you know, being a vibrant and diverse world-class city, there is a symbiotic relationship between a world-class city and your organization. So we have to be a world-class organization at the same time where we are carving out a world-class city. But as an organization, we want to set that standard of operating with a degree of excellence. So we started back in February of 2020, looking at the culture here within the organization, and just some of the high points that we started emphasizing is that we just couldn't continue to operate the way that we had been operating. There are a couple of movies that come to mind that I won't express when I think about how we were operating back then. We had a number of operational gaps that we needed to deal with, and we continued to impress upon the leadership team that we could not close those gaps, you know, by sleeping on the job. It was not going to happen on its own or through osmosis. It required work. That meant everyone had to roll up their sleeves and put in the hard work to turn our organization around. Performance excellence is the word of the day then, it continues to be the word of the day now, and it's needed from the bottom up, the top down, and even if we're going to look at horizontally throughout the organization. Excellence has to be what we do, what we're about, it has to be a, it has to be a habit, not an egg or just something that sounds good. You know, there's a lot of taglines when it comes to excellence, but it has to be what we are about. It has to be what we do and how we do it on a daily basis if we're going to have that standard within the organization. So we set some expectations, staying on top of our policies, procedures, and processes. And there are a myriad of policies, procedures, and processes when you look at the scale and scope of an organization the size that we are. We wanted to have directors to give feedback on any suggested changes. Don't feel like because you were handed or saddled with a procedure that someone before you had in place, if there were things within that procedure that needed to be changed, we wanted to encourage and expect them to bring those changes forward, so that we can get to that place that we were striving for in terms of performance excellence. Strongly encourage the senior leadership team to always do quality control reviews, you know, to always look at the various policies and procedures that guide their particular operations, and we just named some of them here. Some of them are across-the-board, standard procedures, but then there are unique procedures to each operation. Again, on that same wavelength, to identify any barriers that prevented them from being in compliance with the various policies and procedures that control our operating infrastructure, and then you got to do something about it, not just identify a barrier, but to come up with an action plan on how we can close or remove that barrier. So we started on this path back in February 2020, and it is ongoing. Some individuals will probably couch it as continuous improvement. There are a number of leadership books that will have different ways of describing it, but we have been on a path, and it is ongoing. You never get to a, a hard stop when you're talking about performance excellence. That is always going to be a part of who we are and what we strive for. Now, we had our introduction. I've already given you a very mild modeling of it, of the LEAP Initiative that is being presented to you this morning. So what does LEAP stand for? We all have heard the term LEAP, but in the context of this initiative... And Jose, you didn't give me my drum roll. Thank you. In the context of this initiative, LEAP stands for leaning into excellence with action and purpose. We do not want it to just be something that we talk about, it is something that we are going to be about. So again, leaning into excellence with action and purpose. So how do we get to come up with this concept? We had a major event that occurred. We know that it ties into pillar eight, but how did we get to this concept? As I was about to say, we had a major, major event that occurred back in March of 2023. We had the good fortune of having our mayor re-elected without opposition, and I can tell you that immediately after that occurred, he, the mayor started indicating his push that we consistently strive for excellence to avoid becoming complacent. I have standing Monday meetings with the mayor, and I was keeping this checkmark in my office of how many times this came up in our conversation. And Mayor, I'm going to give that to you at some point. I've run out of paper, but I'm going to give that to you. It was a constant reminder that he did not want the organization to get to a place where we had made the strides that we had made, and then feel our work was finished. You know, we should always be striving for... You know, we should always be striving for excellence. We should always make certain that it's top of mind that we don't become complacent about what we do and how we do it. So having heard that for Monday after Monday after Monday after Monday after Monday after Monday for months, we began to have courageous discussions. Mayor, we answered the call. The leadership team began to have courageous discussions, taking a look at what we were doing and where we were missing the mark. And I will share with you that in general, you know, those discussions were very spirited and got to be uh maybe a little dicey because when you are among your leadership team, everyone is not comfortable saying, "I have shortcomings in this area," or "we, as a senior leadership team, have shortcomings in this area. We have not been hitting the mark on this particular procedure," and I'm just giving it as an example, "on uh evaluations." It requires that they be completed within a certain window and as an organization, we have struggled uh with that. So we had to make certain that those discussions were taking place in a safe space. It was not to be an evaluation of any sort, but it was to get out what needed to be identified so that we can then begin uh to wrap our arms around it and come up with how can we move to a higher standard looking at performance excellence. So in hearing uh those discussions, uh started the wheels to turning. So we came up with this concept of 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 LEAP. Now, there are a number of ways that an organization can address uh getting to a standard of performance excellence. You certainly can hire an outside consultant to come in and kind of go through months and months of interviewing with your senior leadership team, interviewing with uh the mayor as our chief executive officer, meet uh interviewing with uh commissioners to kind of get input on where you think uh there are shortcomings within the organization. That's a very long-range ex- uh expensive process. Uh but no one knows better than us where we need to step up our performance. So we did it ourselves. We put in the work and then began to craft individual LEAP plans. So between January and September of this year, we start mobilizing. The plans were finalized and they have been uh implemented on a trial basis for this year. We wanted to make certain that the framework that we laid out, you know, was effective and I think we're well on our way uh to having a very effective framework. So with that, in terms of the objectives of this LEAP uh notion here, we wanted to serve as our motto for uh pillar eight, uh fiscal sustainability and operational excellence. It can't just be good-sounding words as part of the strategic plan. We have to operationalize what that means and the LEAP plans lay out how we demonstrate operational excellence and fiscal sustainability within our organization. It is also to encourage our leaders to perform at the highest standard of excellence and to promote a stronger, more resilient culture of success and accountability. And then it establishes benchmarks for administrative compliance. And I've talked about the three Ps. I gave you some examples there. Some of the other examples that are not on here is when we we included uh W P B Key. That's a new initiative that the mayor put in place. Uh we, in the plan itself, it establishes timeframes by which directors will review the items that come into W P B Key related to their operation and a benchmark for when they will respond. Because again, we don't want to have items just going into W B W P B Key. Some get responded to or looked at, maybe in a three-week timeframe, some in four weeks, some maybe in two days. We wanted to have a standard and that's what is codified in the LEAP plans. So who's taking the LEAP with me? We know that the assistant city administrators are, but we have a senior leadership team that's taking this LEAP. So when we look at the broad categories, under internal governance, we have all four of our operations that fall under internal governance that are taking the LEAP. Some of them are here with us today in their LEAP uh shirts. Others are out of the office and I'm hoping that they took their LEAP shirt and they wore it today. Moving right on to the next group of senior leaders, qualitative life. And that's where the bulk of our operations fall because qualitative life is really the the heart and soul of public service. So we have, I think we have all of the four directors here.
You want to call them to the front of the room so they too can model their shirts?
We'll do that. We'll do a runway afterwards, Mayor. We have all four here, the first group, and let me see who's here taking the LEAP. And the next group of qualitative life leaders. I think we hit a number seven in in this category. We have all four in the room with us as well. And then moving on to the last broad category of our services. We know that we can't provide quality of life if we're not protecting public safety. And so we have our two chiefs that are also taking the LEAP as well.
They seem, they seem thrilled. My God.
Moving right along to wrap up, and I know I'm not going through the details. This is just kind of to pique your interest, to kind of start talking about this LEAP initiative that's going to have a full rollout here very shortly.
Oh, this is just a tease?
This is a tease, Mayor. This is a tease. So what I'm asking of you, Mayor, I'm asking for you to endorse this initiative, although you don't have all of the bells and whistles and I know that's your preference, but at some point, you got to trust your senior leadership team and administrator and just give us your endorsement, knowing that it's going to hit the mark of what you're looking for. And we're also asking that you include your complement of direct reports as part of this initiative. Seriously, I know you still need to see the framework and all, but given what you have required of us in terms of performance excellence, I know you also require of your direct reports. So I am looking with excitement that you're going to endorse it and you're going to include your list of direct reports. And once you do that, Mayor, I will get them a LEAP shirt. I can't get them a LEAP shirt unless you endorse it and include them, but I do have a shirt for you.
Oh, okay.
And in closing, next steps. So the senior leadership team is going to update their LEAP plans for fiscal year twenty-five. There's going to be a full rollout of the initiative in our upcoming strategic planning process. That. Next, strategic planning process is scheduled to be held November eighteenth and nineteenth at Gaines Park. We are structuring it as two half-day sessions. The very first half-day will focus on pillar eight, uh given that it was not included when we did the last strategic plan. It was added at that point, so there were no priority projects for pillar eight. On the eighteenth, it is going to be quite a bit of reporting out of the various accomplishments that we have made as an organization, not just focusing strictly on the LEAP initiative. And then on the nineteenth, we're going to go through pillars one through seven, talk about the new uh priority projects that commissioners and the mayor want to see in the next three-year strategic plan. Uh we're not going to bring in an outside facilitator. Yours truly will facilitate that session. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation, for the tease. Uh I'm certainly very excited to hearing more. And um for the record, let me say that I wholeheartedly endorse this and I will uh speak to my internal team um and get them on board.
Thank you so very much.
All right, okay.
And thank you, team, for showing up in your shirts.
Imagine if you hadn't endorsed it, that would have been awkward.
Yeah, let, please.
Please.
Let, let them do the runway walk.
Come on.
You later.
Don't be shy.
Oh, come on, everybody up here. Everyone with a blue shirt.
Well, Lee, stand up.
There we go, there we go.
All right.
The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now. You all are going to have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget now, overly excited about this. Okay.
Be still, my beating heart. Okay, now you need it, uh thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At uh ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. 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 The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, now you needed, uh, thank you for that presentation. You need about ten minutes, you said?
Five or ten minutes, so we can get teed up for the last presentation.
We will reconvene.
Thank you very much.
At, uh, ten fifty. It's now ten forty-two. The smiles, the smiles.
Okay, so now, you all are gonna have to deal with me being overly excited about the budget, now overly excited about this, okay?
Be still my beating heart. Okay, here we go. Very good. Well, let us resume. We'll now move on to item number three. Proposed Ad Valorem Tax Refund Program Follow-Up. Ms. Johnson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, again, for the record. Faye Johnson, City Administrator. I am going to present this item. And while I'm doing the presentation, I do want to footnote that we have had a team of staff members, you know, helping to kind of hash out an update to what is the program that was presented to the Board back in June. So that was three months ago. And as you know, between June and September, you know, the budget becomes the priority, and we had foreign police union negotiations. So we've had a three-month period between when it was first presented to the Board and today. And given that, I want to just start out with what you're going to hear this morning. Since it was three months ago that this was first presented to you in concept, I want to do a recap of what was presented back on June 3rd. And then to review the questions that were generated from the commissioners. Based on what you heard, the follow-up that was done by staff in an effort to address the questions from the commissioners, and then present the update of the proposed program guidelines. What I am looking to get out of today's presentation is input from the Board, and you, Mayor, as part of the Board, on the proposed updated guidelines, and hopefully, support of the program, so that we can move forward with then working on more of the details by way of the applications and outlining procedures and what have you. And then to go through next steps. So again, starting with the recap of the June 3rd, 2024 work session. It was proposed as the Ad Valorem Tax Reimbursement Program. And you'll hear me, and you'll see it being referred to as the refund program. They're one in the same. So back on June 3rd, the overview. The program is intended to be an enhancement of economic activity in non-CRA areas of the city. And that is important. This program is not designed to be within the CRA boundaries of the city. It's outside of the CRA areas. To attract and expand key targeted industries within the city, with a component to allow affordable and workforce housing programs, to use only the tax increment from the project, another key factor. And then we also went through the various strategic pillars that this program aligns with. So we had legal to go over the legal authority that provides the Board's ability, if you were to support the program, to be able to do so. We actually had a representative from the law firm who actually led the development in Fort Lauderdale's program and putting together the legal opinion, who was here to speak directly to the Board. In terms of eligibility, I emphasized that the projects must be located outside of the CRA boundaries. We went through the list of the target industries that are included up on the screen. Again, the projects may also include a component of affordable and workforce housing that would have to meet the city's program guidelines. And then we talked about the incentive term and levels. So back on June 3rd, what was proposed was that it would not exceed ninety-five percent of the project's tax increment. The refund amount would be determined annually. The proposed term was up to twenty-five years, so a maximum of twenty-five years. And then the left of term would be determined on a project-by-project basis. Again, the reimbursement percentage and incentive terms. Some of the things that we would take into consideration was the level of the capital investment, number of jobs created, salaries, and their number of other things that would go into that determination. Those were the four pillars that this program aligns with. The built community, pillar four, education, economy, and jobs. Pillar five, equity and empowerment. And pillar seven, public health and public safety. So I've passed out the questions that came from various commissioners. Those are in front of you. And as we go through the update of the proposed program, you will see how those questions are being addressed. If we did not address one of the questions or concerns that were raised, please bring that forward. I do want to indicate two of the items, which you're not going to see specifically lined up here. When you look at question six from Commissioner Fox about the Live Local and whether this was going to be a double incentive. Live Local is a state housing strategy, you know, that allowed residential development in commercial and industrial zones, mixed use. So when we look at the inclusion of the workforce and affordable housing program, based on how we, as a city, have moved forward with Live Local, and I think we did an update revision to our comp plan. If the project includes an affordable workforce housing component, they would have to meet that, because we have incorporated that by ordinance. So that would be on the housing side. They would still be eligible to get the refund of the increment related to the taxes that they generate on their project. Moving on, another specific items that was questioned that will not be addressed in the proposed guidelines was question thirteen. Commissioner Lambert asked about the basis of how the targeted industries were selected. The industries were actually developed back when Mr. Ruge was serving as the Economic Development Director. And I've asked him to be at the table if he wanted to go into more detail about that. But in general, it began with the 2018 Economic Development Study. And out of that study, there were study groups that were formed and interviews that were done. The information that came out of those interviews helped shape and inform the targeted industries that went into the economic development plan. So the industries that are included here will pull from that plan, but that's the background on how they came about. So with that, based on the questions that came out of the June 3rd work session. And I want to just start out by indicating to the Board that the concept that is before you this morning for your consideration, it's not a new concept. You know, it's a concept that has been tested. You all, as the policymakers, have seen it in different forms, but it's just being presented now in terms of a new economic development tool that we would have in our toolbox for areas outside of the CRA. But it is not a new concept. So we looked at the county's tax exemption program. We have a tax exemption program. We don't talk about it, and I'll go through that. And again, the program that is being proposed is really based in large part on the Fort Lauderdale's Tax Reimbursement Program. And then looking at our CRA Tax Increment Financing Program, there are a number of parallels between these various programs with what is being proposed today. So I want to make certain, and I want to emphasize, this is not a new concept. This is a concept that has been around in one form or another, a concept that has been tested, and it has proven to be effective. So with that, when we look at the county's tax exemption, and there is a distinction between an exemption and a reimbursement. An exemption is really regulated by state statute. It's Economic Development Ad Valorem Tax Exemption Program. They are exempt from paying the taxes as allowed under Section 3, Article 7, State Statute 196.1995. It requires that you go to the voters to get it approved, the county, and it comes with a set ten-year period unless it is renewed. The county went out in 1994 for voter referendum. It was approved. They have since had three reauthorizations by voter referendum for approval or renewal of the program. The most recent one was here in 2024. The focus of the county's program is new businesses and existing businesses. It is done on a project-by-project basis, based on the information that is in the county's agenda item, which I footnoted here for the source that was presented to their Board for authorization to go back out to the voters. It indicated that between 2013 and 2023, the county had approved six businesses for a tax exemption for approximately 6.3 million in total tax exemption or taxes that, county taxes, that they were exempt from paying. The exemption, again, was from county taxes, from improvements to real property and/or tangible personal property, not already on the tax rule. So that concept works, in essence, like the tax increment financing in the CRA. Whatever taxes were already being paid from a project went into the county's coffers. The taxes generated from the improvements is what they were exempt from paying. So that's on the county's side. When I looked at what we have on the books here at the city, we really kind of modeled or mirrored the county's program. We have an Economic Development Ad Valorem Tax Exemption Program as I speak. That is currently on the books. Again, the enabling legislation is the same as what enabled the county to do their program. We went out for a voter referendum back in 2016. It is a ten-year period. It is set to sunset in 2016 unless the Board decides to go back out for a voter referendum for another ten-year. Our focus is new businesses and existing businesses as well. It is reviewed on a project-by-project basis. However, we have not had anyone to submit an application for our program. Again, if we were to have had anyone to come in, it would have been on the improvements to the real property and/or tangible personal property, not already on the tax rule, allowing up to 100% of the increment, almost identical to Palm Beach County's program, tax exemption. They don't have to pay the taxes. So we move on by way.
Ms. Johnson, if you don't mind, a few questions.
Not at all.
President Ward, Commissioner Fox, and then Commissioner Lambert.
Do we, do we know why no one has applied? Is no one's applied, or we just haven't granted it? And do we have to look at why nobody has?
I'm gonna let Chris speak to that, because it was put on the books when he wore the hat as Economic Development Director.
So there's been plenty of conversations about it, and with potential business owners. But at the end of the day, many of the businesses that are coming to locate into the city weren't purchasing the property that they were then going to locate the business into. And that made it really difficult to actually provide the tax exemption to the actual business, because it's not a tax exemption that can go to a property owner. It has to go to the actual business in place. So that just, that really precluded a lot of businesses, because most of the businesses in the city that were interested in it were leasing their property.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I have the same question, but just to clarify, are you saying that since 2016, we've never had one business take advantage of this?
That's correct.
Okay. Would, do you happen to know if, when we went out for it, was it a similar situation like this? Like there had been talk about needing a program like that, and that's why you went out for it? And just, there was no conversation, I guess, beforehand with businesses, whether or not you thought it would be taken advantage of, or just?
There were a couple of goals at the time that we pursued this. One was that very few cities in the county actually had the tax exemption program. And as you know, we have a great relationship with the Business Development Board of Palm Beach County. And it was kind of a strategic recommendation that if we could all put out a tax exemption program, you would actually do two things. One is you would market the overall region as open and very pro-business, enhancing the business climate for the entire area. Second is it gave the BDB a greater, a greater reach and toolkit, if you will, with locating potential prospects, because the BDB is agnostic to where they go, as long as they're coming in Palm Beach County. So that just kind of made sure that everybody, if you, you know, if everybody had this program, they could really go anywhere, including, and then not only would you get the county tax exemption, you would also get the local municipal tax exemption, which would be attractive for a business locating in that area.
Michelle, you did it. Lambert, you did it, did not advocate. Okay. Okay, you can proceed, Ms. Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the next program, which is the one that was presented here, but I wanted to kind of review Fort Lauderdale's program, given that this is the one that kind of generated our thinking in bulk, the proposed program forward. So Fort Lauderdale's program is an Affordable Workforce Housing Tax Reimbursement Program. The distinction from what we're proposing in terms of businesses and economic development. The enabling legislation, you know, is under the city's Home Rule Powers, which are codified in Chapter 166 of the state statutes. They adopted their program by resolution. You see the number there. I've indicated the agenda item number 230909, which was approved at their October 3rd, 2023 City Commission Meeting. Again, it was established August of 2023. Their program is for a fifteen-year period. It is ongoing. The focus is affordable workforce housing developments. It is set up where projects are reviewed on a project-by-project basis. To date, they have one development that really was the genesis of them putting the program together. So that one development has been approved. It exempts them from the taxes that are generated from their project on improvements to the real property and/or tangible personal property, not already on the tax rule. They actually exempt them from 100% of the increment that is generated. They do all of it. It actually turns out to be, the 100% is the 90% that we're required to budget, but they just do a flat exemption of all of it, based on the information that we obtained. So moving on to what you all are very familiar with, and again, I'm glad Mr. Ruge is at the table, because he is the subject matter expert when it comes to the community redevelopment. when it comes to the Community Redevelopment Agency and the Tax Increment Financing Program we have in place. So we know that we have two CRA areas. We have the Downtown City Center CRA, and then we have the Northwood Pleasant City CRA. It's enabled by State Statute, Chapter 163, Part 3. And then we had to go through an adoption of the program by ordinance, which was ordinance number 1805 back in 1984. It was established in September of that year, a term of 40-plus years as extended. And that extension has to do with bonds and how it allows you, if you're bonding programs, to then extend the life of the CRA. Based on information from Mr. Rube, it sunsets 2039. The focus of all CRAs is the removal of slum and blight. It actually can be used for businesses, affordable, and affordable housing within the two CRA boundaries. Again, Chris and his team, they review projects on a project-by-project basis, and approximately 10, or maybe a little over 10, have been approved for tax increment financing. So back in 1984, that was the baseline that was set. And then the increment from the improvements within the two CRA areas is what the CRA utilizes to provide a tax refund to projects and to also fund various other initiatives, including staff and a number of other things. So it's not just for providing financing of projects. They actually have to finance staff operations as well. On the increment side, up to 50% of the increment is provided to a project. And that's determined based on a number of factors that Chris and his team looks at, as well as the consultant that assists in reviewing the deals. So with that, when we look forward at what we're trying to get the board's support for this Economic Development Ad Valorem Tax Refund Program, it's really modeled at the Fort Lauderdale's program and the CRA Tax Increment Financing Program. Again, if the board were to give us the green light to move it forward, you would be able to do that under your Home Rule Powers, again, codified in Chapter 166 of the statute. You would have to adopt the program by resolution. We would review projects on a project-by-project basis. The term that we're presenting or proposing would go beyond 10 years. Back in June, we proposed a maximum of 25 years. We're gonna walk through the update. And again, what would be made available for the refund would be the increment between what is already on the tax rule and what is generated from that project based on improvements to the real property and/or tangible personal property, not already on the tax rule. So at a minimum, the city would still collect what is being collected at the point that the projects would come online and be eligible. And so I don't want that to get lost, that we would be giving up all of the taxes associated with the project. Moving on, the updated program guidelines for your consideration this morning. Again, just by way of comparison, and I've provided copies of the map to you. I know it may be a little hard to see on the overhead. So we have the two CRA areas. The Northwood CRA is outlined in purple. The Downtown CRA is outlined in green. Those two areas would not be eligible for this program. It's specifically for areas outside of the CRA because projects within the CRA are eligible for the increment financing generated within the CRA. So theoretically, all of the areas outside of those two boundaries within the city's corporate limits, in theory, would be eligible for this program. So here are the updated program guidelines. Again, it would be applicable to non-CRA boundaries within the city. Rather than an ongoing program, we are proposing that it be a two-year pilot program to be effective from November 2024 through November of 2026, if we're able to move it forward. If not, if it slides to December, then it would be December of 2024 to December of 2026. In the resolution, it would automatically, it would include language whereby it would automatically sunset unless the board at that time takes further action. We are proposing that we would limit the number of projects to two years and that the focus be on large commercial projects. In terms of the limitation of the two projects, to provide an exception whereby if there is a third project that comes along that the mayor feels is appropriate for consideration, we will bring that to the board to then be able to consider a third project. But we're proposing, under this pilot program, that we limit it to two projects based on a first-come, first-approved basis and that the projects rotate among commission districts. Given that we want to incentivize economic redevelopment throughout the city, we don't want to see this program, if it were to be approved, just centered in one commission district, but to have all of the districts within the city to benefit from it. Moving right along, we're proposing that it be, it allowed alone, commercial corridors. And we have indicated the five major commercial quarters, two, six corridors that we're proposing that the program be focused on. South Dixie Highway from Palm Street to southern city limits, Southern Boulevard, Washington Road to I-95, Belvedere Road, Olive Avenue to west of Australian Avenue, Okeechobee Boulevard, I-95 to just west of Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, Palm Beach Lakes, east of Foreign Way to Okeechobee, 45th Street, Congress Avenue to west of Military Trail. These commercial corridors are what Mr. Green informed me. These are the corridors that have that designation. So that's what it aligns with. In terms of the term and level, rather than the 95% cap that we presented on June 3, we're proposing that it be capped at 75% of the increment with an exception that should we have a deal that financially needs to have more than the 75% increment refunded to them, that at the mayor's recommendation, we will bring that to the board for consideration. So best-case scenario, if we were to cap it at 75%, the city would get the taxes that were already on the tax rule from a project, and then you, the city would receive the increment that exceeds the 75%. We would get everything above the 75% and then the 95% that we budget for. So we would get the normal taxes that we would get from the project. In addition, we would get a portion of the new taxes that is generated as part of the increment. We're proposing that it be a maximum of 20 years rather than the 25 years. The 25 years is consistent with the longest term of a CRA project that is now under consideration in terms of the TIF. So it would be consistent in that regard. And again, that term would be determined on a project-by-project basis. Again, I want to emphasize, it would not be where every project that comes in the door is an automatic 20 years. It would be determined on a project-by-project basis. Some of the other specific requirements is that the property must have been on the tax rule, the minimum same number of years of the requested tax refunds. So let's just say hypothetically, if a project comes in and the developer is asking for 15 years, we want to make certain that that property has been contributing at least 15 years to our tax base. So if it has not, then that's going to be a backstop where we would not recommend that they would get the 15 years if they have not been contributing to the city's tax base for the same number of years. We're proposing that each project has a public benefit component. For example, it could be parks, open space, street lighting, public art, and there may be other public benefits that you all would like to see included in the program as well. A minimum of 15% of the on-site workers must be city residents. A minimum of 18% of the contractors and subcontractors from small businesses and minority women-owned businesses certified by the city. We're proposing, given that these are to be large-scale commercial projects, a minimum of 50 new permanent jobs. So by way of a wrap-up, when we look at high level, the difference between the two. Initially, June 3, it was proposed to be an ongoing program. We're now proposing that it be a two-year pilot. It was initially proposed that the increment available to them not exceed the 90%. We're proposing to cap it at 75% with the exception, that exception being at the direction of the mayor, consideration by the commission. Initially, the term of up to 25 years. We're now proposing that it be up to 20 years as determined on a project-by-project basis. I've just walked you through all of the other guidelines or requirements that we have also included since the June 3 presentation. The eligibility would remain the same. The project must be located outside of the CRA boundaries of the city. The eligible targeted industries remain the same with the inclusion of affordable workforce housing, given the critical need for housing within those categories within our city. So next steps. What we're hoping to obtain this morning, again, is input from the commissioners and the mayor on the updated guidelines and hopefully, support to move forward with the program. If we were to receive that, we will begin to finalize the program guidelines, the application, so that when we bring it to the board for adoption by resolution, we would have the application and all of that finalized and in place. We hope to be able to come to you at a November City Commission meeting. It would go into effect 10 days after the resolution is adopted. We would then move to program implementation, hopefully by the latest December of 2024. And we have built in an annual update to the board, which would be in November of 2025. And that certainly could be sooner if the board wants to get an update in six months after the program goes live. And with that, Mayor, I turn it back to you for discussion.
Thank you for that presentation. I appreciate the follow-up. And again, this is just another tool that the city would have in its toolbox as we sought to work with businesses looking to set up here. And obviously, before any deal is finalized, it will come before this commission, and you will get the final say, and you'll know all about why we believe the application of this program is appropriate for that particular deal. Any questions? All right, we'll start with President Ward, Commissioner Beduzzi, Commissioner Fox. Okay, everybody got a question? Okay, we'll start with President Ward.
Yeah, I have a few, so I'll just do my one. And obviously, you're gonna send this presentation to us so I can digest everything.
Yes.
Okay, great. How did you go about determining some of the factors, like all commercial? I mean, I know that the CRA boundaries are different, but you know, when I think about North Dixie, Broadway, you know, we haven't necessarily been successful in pushing development there despite having incentive program already. And so I'm wondering, even if we, even if there weren't CRA boundaries, would you just still not recommend that because they're mixed-use districts versus all commercial?
I'm gonna ask Rick to help me if, because I'm going on the designation. If it were commercial and neighborhood commercial, I know there were a couple of designation on the corridors that we looked at. It's not intended to be for just, you know, every business entity that we have within the city, just based on the sheer number. So we're looking at the program really generating, you know, a pretty large-scale redevelopment of an area. So we proposed it based on corridors, and I'll let Mr. Green speak to the actual designation.
Rick Green, Development Services Director. Typically, the zoning designations within the corridors that Ms. Johnson outlined are either general commercial or neighborhood commercial. But I believe the intent is to be able to use the incentive in almost any locale to add as a, work as a stimulant to try to encourage redevelopment. I don't know if that answered your question.
Not, I mean, not totally, I guess, because I'm just trying to, I mean, like, look at the industrial district in my area, too. You know, there are businesses that have come in and providing, I mean, one of my questions is also that 50, you know, 50 new jobs, given we have got AI and all these other things coming into play that could provide less actual physical bodies, but a heck of a lot of economic generation. And so, I mean, again, that's why I feel like I have to digest this that you're presenting today, but it prompts those questions. Why not the industrial district? That's heavily underutilized. And again, North Dixie and Broadway are heavily underutilized.
Oh, I mean, it's proposed, and so that's part of what we're looking to get from this discussion, is input from the board and allowing time for us to go back and analyze it and see what then come forward.
We can before it comes to the actual commission for approval. So those are points. And even if you don't ask the questions now, if you have, if you say you digest it, do you want to send in a memo with some additional concerns? Please feel free. All right, Commissioner Beduzzi.
Thank you. I am going to need some time to digest this as well, and I also have a couple of questions. I'm trying to wrap my head around the necessity and how this will benefit us. And in the interest of transparency and necessity, have we already identified, or have we been approached, or have we had any conversations with any entities or any developers or organizations that may benefit from this program? Have we, have we seen a need for it that, and are we trying to tailor it to any particular industry or program that we've already spoken with?
We are not trying to tell it, tailor it to any particular industries. But yes, similar to what Mr. Rube indicated, there were conversations being held when the city came forward with the exemption program. We have been having conversations. I think there has typically been conversations in general about the lack of an economic development tool outside of the CRA. I mean, the TIF is pretty envious when you look at what it does for development in businesses. And we don't have a similar tool. So that has always been sort of a background conversation, and we have, we, meaning staff, you know, has looked at a number of different initiatives and done research on other municipalities and things that they have. But more recently, we have started having conversations with individuals who seem to be very, very interested in a program like this and it being that missing tool that they need in order to do the kind of development that this program will help spur.
One more question, Mayor?
Yes.
I know you said that the intention is to spread this among the districts. And it, am I incorrect that it doesn't look like there's much of District 4 that's included? Maybe out Nor, out of 45th Street, maybe? Maybe out Nor, out of Forty-Fifth Street, maybe west of Military might be District Four somewhere in there? Is there any other portions of District Four that are going to be included in this beside that maybe small area?
Well, again, this is for input from the board. What we propose is what has been presented, but this is not cast in stone. We're looking to get input from the board. So I'm glad that is spurring kind of some thinking and thoughts here. And, you know, we'll take that input and then go back here. Now, when we look at June third, you know, we just had not put the kind of guidelines in place that is being presented today. So the questions that we got in June third spurred the thinking of staff, what other guidelines we need to put in place. And questions or input that we get this morning will just further inform us of what we need to do by way of fine-tuning the proposed program.
One follow-up on that?
Let me go around. All right, all right, give me your follow-up.
Just real quick, just if someone could get with me and, because it's hard to tell from this district boundary map what might be included for District Four or not. And if someone could get with me and let me know if any portion of District Four is included in this, and if it's not, I'd like to see some portion included. Thank you.
Okay, specifically, though, what is proposed in terms of the corridors? Now, what, what part of those fall into District Four? We would have to map that. But what is proposed as presented this morning are the corridors, the six that were listed.
I think it's important to keep in mind that what we're trying to do here spurred development in some of the parts of our city, which are outside the CRA, which are underdeveloped. It's not meant necessarily to say every district is going to get a project. Similar to what we do with the CRA, we're trying to beef up parts of our city that are outside the CRA that need some, some impetus, some tweaking, some spurring. So that is another part of the program where we're trying to encourage development in those areas where now, once this project is in, it will lead to an increase in tax revenues that we can use as an incentive. Okay, we'll walk around the table. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I think because before this meeting, I'm not sure I knew that we already had an economic program like this. So I'm not clear exactly what the differences are, but I think you mentioned that other program we already have, Sunset's in 2026, and that we haven't had any takers. So I'm curious if you can explain a little bit, I guess, about the differences in this program that make you think that we're going to have more interest than we've had before?
Well, let me take the last part of that. I can't speak prospectively on why we would have more interest conceivably now than what we had back then, given that that was not done in terms of me being at the table. And I can't speak factually why it was not of interest to developers. But in terms of the distinction, the difference between the two programs, one is codified by statute and it automatically has a ten-year period. It requires voter referendum. It is a tax exemption, so the developer does not pay the taxes. And depending on how it's structured with our program, it was the hundred percent. I believe the county does the hundred percent of the increment. Under the proposed program, it is codified under the home rule powers, which means the city has the discretion in terms of how it's structured. We're not bound to the ten years that if you were to do it under the state statute that allows the exemption. So home rule allows us the discretion to design the program to fit our needs. So what is proposed, it would be a refund. The developer would have to pay the taxes and then they will get a portion of the increment proposed, seventy-five percent of the increment that is generated from their project. Unlike the exemption that comes with an automatic ten-year, what we're proposing is a maximum of twenty years. So that's the difference in the two programs. And it, again, home rule allows the board the ability to design the program to fit the city's needs as opposed to what the state requires. If you do it under the economic development exemption, it's almost like a canned program. You got to do it only this way. Ten years, voter referendum, exemption, the hundred percent compared to home rule. You define the number of years, you define the level of the reimbursement in the areas, so forth and so on.
Commissioner Warren?
I'll probably be like Commissioner Beduzzi and have to come back around to me.
No, we expect that. This is, this is just the first.
Thank you. I, there used to be a young lady that worked with the CRA probably about twelve or so years ago, who, whose primary job was tax increment financing. And she also talked to people about what it actually is. And I'd love the opportunity to know more, and I don't know where my colleagues sit, with their knowledge of how TIF is, what TIF really is. So I'd love to know if you and I could have a one-on-one and talk about that or if my colleagues want to have something as a work session? I'm not sure, but just going to put that out there. The, when I think, when I look at this and in our conversations, I know that particularly several of the corridors here are District Two. And District Two, at one time, was considered to be a kind of a self-contained district. It had everything, you know, with its, the fire station and the mall and the shopping centers and that very busy business corridor along Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard that I know has largely changed over the last, over the last couple of decades because people have moved to our downtown. And we know that the development that has taken place downtown has been largely for large-scale developers. So I, I'm excited to see that we can look forward to stimulating development of Class B office space of different levels of businesses that will be created and different levels of jobs that will be created along these other corridors in our city. So I wanted to just voice my support for the way that this is shaping up. And I know that it's going to continue to improve. But I am, I'm excited about what I'm seeing here, and I just, I wanted to share that. And those are the first two comments that I'll make.
All right, we'll walk our way back around. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. I have some thanks to give first, as well as, I really appreciate you providing these questions that we asked because I think that it's helpful. We talked about this in June and it refreshed my memory on some of the things that were asked. So thank you for this format. And then also thank you, you know, I know that in speaking with business owners and residents throughout our entire city, that they often are confused or disillusioned or disappointed that some of the CRA benefits are not available throughout the city. And so I really appreciate the creativity in what I'm hearing is maybe a little bit of an expansion and a little bit more leeway than what we have on the books already. And I'm hopeful that that will provide some interest from the development community. I was excited to see the slide before this one, I think it was, that talked about the rotation amongst the districts because I think that's important. If we're going to offer something that is citywide, I would, you know, like to make sure that, you know, all boats rise with the tide, that we're not focusing in just one area of our city, but that we're looking everywhere. And so then, when, you know, I was happy to see that there. And then we went to the next slide, which designated specific areas. I don't want to presume anything, but this was what I thought of when I saw the next slide that showed the commercial areas. Because in some of the description, I saw it said, "large-scale size." And so maybe if we could just define that a little bit, I presume that that's what staff was using to define those commercial areas. But to Commissioner Ward's point, you know, I don't know, is that possible in the warehouse district that she talked about in the north end? Or is there no large-scale opportunities there from the staff's perspectives? That's kind of the questions that I had.
Well, I think in terms of how we define it as large scale, it would be, you know, based on the number of jobs. You saw the minimum of the fifty jobs and then with the eighteen percent SMWVE. So those factors are what really went into us defining it as large scale. But again, that's not cast in stone. That's simply what, based on staff's, you know, best recommendation or proposal to the board for your consideration. But this has to be a program that the board feels works for the board and the city. And so any input that we can get on how we can continue to refine it, that's part of what we're looking to get out of this work session.
Clarification?
Okay.
Thank you. And so, do you mind going to the slide where you talked about the fifty jobs? So I appreciate knowing because I was thinking large-scale meant landmass, but you're saying large-scale?
Well, you can, we can define it, you know, as landmass, but we're looking at economic development. So we looked at jobs because when you think about landmass, I mean, the city land is pretty much landlocked in terms of what's available. So for the staff that have been working on refining this, using landmass as one of the factors was just not something that we gave much consideration to. And again, am I going the wrong direction on it? Yes, I am. Again, if the board has a different way of defining what you want to see the program targeted to, that's the kind of input that we need to have so that we can design it the way that the board want to see it structured.
I appreciate that comment and appreciate that the staff gives recommendations and some research on it. I guess maybe another bit of research or recommendation that might be helpful in determining how I feel about it would be whether this is from Chris Rue, yourself, or our Business Economic Development Director, would be, you know, those industries that we have identified as being eligible for this. What, what do those jobs look like? And are, in those industries, is fifty jobs creation typical? Or as Commissioner Ward mentioned, are we looking at, you know, utilizing technology more efficiently that, in another way that provides economic development? I don't know that we have the answer now, but just something we could explore.
Well, I, I mean, the job, the job creation, I mean, we, I think we'd have to look at the data to understand for the different, like, because I know in one of our industries, boutique design, and when you think about a lot of, frankly, the cottage industry that's happening in South Dixie, and now, we were actually in Knights of Northwood this past weekend. It's actually now starting to show signs of blossoming in Northwood Village is this, this mixture of small boutique firms that I think wouldn't reach that fifty percent, but they're also very, very small. And I don't know that a tax increment would probably benefit them all that much. But definitely, when you think about finance, medical, marine, education, like, those will definitely generate, I think, a, a job creation amount of fifty or more, just seeing in the past firms that we've partnered with in the past. And then also, when you start thinking about the average salaries that come with those industries, generally, I think they're going to be applicable.
Great, thank you.
And I think one thing to think about the job requirement is, are we getting enough bang for our buck? So if we are going to basically have a tax reimbursement program extended over a period of time, which means those are tax revenues we're not getting, what in effect does a city get? So having a number of jobs which have reasonable salaries, I think is probably a fair exchange because now we're attracting people to our city to live here, to work here. Whereas if we didn't have kind of that quid pro quo, I'm sorry, bad words to use in this environment, that, that kind of exchange where, okay, if you're going to participate in this program and you're not going to have to pay taxes or you'll get reimbursed for the tax increment for a period of time, what is it that the city is getting in return for, in effect, that investment in your business? Okay, we'll work our way back around. President Ward?
Thank you. And I just want to be clear, when I bring these things up, I'm seeing it for the first time. So I, you know, it's just things that I thought of immediately, fifty, what if they've got forty-five? What if they've got expansion plans and that this first business leads to three more shops down the road? Those type of things where I wanted more guidelines and you guys did that, and I'm greatly appreciative. I just, when seeing that, that's what comes, what comes to mind is, is that rigidness or are we only, you know, even medical, for instance, you know, we talk about BDB. One of the things that they mentioned in a prior BDB was that, look at all the medical industries that are already coming here. And then flip that with, we're going to have a crazy shortage of RNs coming up, another medical personnel. So I, I mean, it's like, okay, do, are we getting a lot of medical? Do we need to incentivize them more? Do we, on top of that? It's just this, and the fact that we haven't had any applicants, like, I wasn't aware of this existing statute and that we haven't had any applications. And to me, I'm, I don't mean to be sounding so critical. It didn't seem like there was much of a difference other than reimbursement versus refund, which reimbursement is more, is challenging, more challenging than, than just outrageous, just refund. We get that in a lot of our grants, people saying, gosh, I can't, I, I would prefer just not to pay for it all versus getting reimbursed. And then obviously, the ten-year versus twenty-year, which I have hesitations about giving someone twenty, twenty years off. So again, I'm just firing away commentary because this is a lot to digest and we shouldn't be taking this lightly. It does impact us. And then I go back to what I said the first time around, is that we have CRA districts for a reason. It's worked nicely in the downtown. It was more of a driver for downtown because it is our downtown. We have a lot of government buildings here. This is a place to go. We are still working very hard in the historic Northwest, and we have a lot of ways to go still in, in my district with the other CRA. And so I selfishly am trying to balance that, like, I know there's other areas that say, oh, we don't get these CRA benefits. Think about the other benefits that you get in your area, which is why a CRA was created to begin with. And so that's another hesitation I have. And when you were talking about differences between the two, is it still the owner-occupied requirement as well? That, you know, Chris, you mentioned that that was one of the limitations, is that it's owner-occupied?
Yes, because if you give, it's got to be someone who's, who owns it to get the tax, you know, benefit. We can't give the tax benefit to the tenant. So yes.
So we're thinking about adopting something where one of the limitations as to why, potentially why we haven't gotten applicants is not being altered?
Well, let's throw it out there and see if there are any takers, Commissioner. I mean, if no one takes it, what have we lost? But at least we're trying to put together something that hopefully will entice folks from other parts of our city to participate in the program. What's the downside, other than staff time?
That's a big downside.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think with, with, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to cut you off. And, and we certainly don't expect, you know, you ought to take this lightly. I mean, we're talking about our tax base here and a tax refund. But without having specific data that I could walk you all through, that we had this individual landowner who, who met with us and looked at the program, and this is the reason they told us why they didn't, you know, take the next step to apply for it. You know, I can't give you that kind of specific information. You know, based on the fact that we haven't had any participants in the program and given the conversations that we're having now with some of the things that individuals have told us that would make a program attractive to them, you know, we have designed this proposed program. Now, is it foolproof or a guarantee that if we were to put it forward, you're going to have people? We can't give that kind of guarantee. But we are being informed by the conversations of individuals who have said to us, if you had a program that provided certain things, it would be it would be very attractive and I would be interested in participating.
Okay, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I wanted to ask a question about the Live Local. I know that, I think the state allows for 40%, if you do 40% affordable housing or something like that, you can build as tall as, the tallest building within a mile. So, I'm curious if this, if, if someone was going to utilize that, as you mentioned, that they could do both Live Local and this program. I, you know, I just, I think that there would be a lot of opportunity for 50 jobs to be created in some of our other areas where a space might be smaller, and I think about just the size that you need to fit 50 people doing work. So, I'm curious if there are other thoughts about zoning changes or if that, if that was just excluded from this program, I'm just curious.
Me, zoning changes?
In terms of if somebody needed more height, I mean, some of these spaces, I don't know what they're all zoned for, if they're all zoned for taller than what's there now, you know, we have a lot of in these corridors, one-story buildings. I'm just curious, in terms of trying to get to 50 jobs, I, you know, I just don't know that that, that many jobs fits in all the locations I can think of that are available. So, I was just curious about that. Not a proponent or, either, I'm just curious if it was thought about at all, in terms of the size.
We didn't take zoning changes into consideration with proposing a program, if I'm following you, rather or not.
Or, or just height limitations and things like that. I'm just, I was just curious if there any, other than the Live Local, which obviously can be changed by following those state rules.
Now, I, I'm gonna let Rick's, Mr. Green, speak to whether or not there is anything on the books separate and apart from it. It was not taken into consideration as part of developing the updated guidelines that are being presented. We did not consider zoning changes to try to maybe get increased height if they're going to do affordable housing as part of their project, if I'm understanding the question correctly.
Or just, yeah, mostly that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that, that's a loaded question. I, I will say that the first incentive that we did for workforce housing, when it, as it applies to downtown, does allow a developer to seek additional density and additional height. In exchange, what we said when we met with the developers, they said, well, the program still doesn't work for workforce housing because the price of land is affordable. And what we did three years ago, very similar to what Ms. Johnson is suggesting today, is we said that we're going to mandate, if we give you more height and more density, you have to set aside 20% of the units for workforce housing. We said you charge a, a cap, if you will, on the rent that you charge for a unit based on AMI, 60, 80, or 100%, and the market rate is here. We said we would bridge that gap between what we allow you to charge and the market rate for a period of 10 years, and then they have to take responsibility of that for the second 10 years. So, in that example, we're giving them more height, we're capping how much they can charge for some of the units, and then we're using tax increment to fund that difference over a 10-year period the developer's responsible for the remaining 20 years. And then we recently, as you know, adopted a second workforce housing provision that allows developments to double their density in exchange for keeping 25% of those units as workforce housing. So, we do it to a small extent, but as part of this program, we're not proposing zoning changes at this time.
Commissioner Beduzzi?
Thank you. And I just wanted to make it clear that I understand the need to incentivize in certain corridors in our city, and some areas need probably more incentivization than others. But at the same time, the presentation, the pa, the, the documents that we received talked about making sure that, that there was some sort of inclusion among the commission districts, that we wanted to spread this out amongst the commission districts. And I, as a commissioner of District Four, wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't advocate for my district just to make sure that there's some inclusion. You know, we have commercial corridors in, in District Four in multiple different areas, being such a large district. And I just would like to see if we're doing this citywide program and we're including all the districts, that District Four be included as well.
Can I ask you to give me a suggested quarter in District Four that you will want included? If not now, via email, or I can have a one-on-one? That is precisely the kind of input that we're looking to get. You know, it's just no way that I was going to bring back a proposal that was going to hit on all cylinders with one, two, three, four, five, six commissioners, including the mayor. So, the idea is to get the exact kind of input that you all are articulating so that we can take it back and come back with a third iteration. So, if there is a quarter in your district that we obvi, obviously have unintentionally overlooked, I want to hear. I want to get that, that proposal.
And again, I think it's important, this is a program that will go out to the private sector. They will come back to us if they're interested with specific projects, which again, we will, as a body, consider and vote upon. So, we're not trying to be, I don't think we're going to create something that we can guarantee i- i- is going to be attractive. We're, we're trying to make it as attractive as possible, but we throw it out there to the private sector, the development community, and say, listen, this is something, this is a program, similar to what we did with our affordable housing, and the zoning changes that you might want to consider as you're putting together a program or a project. And then they'll come to us and see, and tell us whether it works for them or doesn't work for them, and we'll see what the interest is. Commissioner Warren?
I, I recognize that we all represent different districts, but I think that it's important for us to remember that we represent all districts at the same time. And when I'm voting, and I'm hoping when we're all voting and considering things, that we're looking at the greater West Palm Beach. And I think that this supports different people, different projects, different perspectives, different opportunities to create and be a part of West Palm Beach. And I'm very happy to see that this has come before us, and I'll just leave it there.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. On another topic, on Slide 22, you talked about public benefit. Yes, thank you. And I was really pleased to see that included as one of the project requirements. And so, I would imagine that if this were to, if there was a project that was looking to take advantage of this and was moving through the process, there would be some discussion among staff and commission to talk about what that public benefit is, that this program does not specify it has to be a public park or it has to be this, so that if something came up in this area, that one area had more of a need of, of public benefit, that would be able to be fleshed out in the negotiation process.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, great. I, I'm excited to see that, thank you.
Work our way around, President Ward?
Um, the first bullet point on this, so it, you know, you're thinking like what churches, perhaps, conversion of that, where did that, that requirement stem from?
For bullet one?
Must have been on tax rule minimum same years, yep.
Well, we just thought that it should be equitable in terms of the number of years that a property has contributed to the tax base. If they're going to be asking for X number of years, where they get the refund, that, that was really the, the thought behind that.
Okay.
So, if, if, let's say, a, a development has only been on the books for two years, and they're doing a redevelopment, if you will, they, they, they've been on the books for two years, they're doing a redevelopment. So, they've only contributed to our tax base for two years, and they want a 20-year term for a refund. Now, again, that was just the thought that they should have contributed to the tax base at least the same number of years that they're looking to get a tax refund.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Beduzzi?
No questions.
Commissioner Warren?
No questions.
Commissioner Lambert?
All set, thank you.
All right, and again, this is not your only bite of the apple, go back, digest it, and if you have any other questions, concerns, observations, send an email to the city administrator. What is your timing in terms of, can you go to that next steps slide again so we could get a sense as to?
Well, the timing, Mayor, was to bring it to the board for adoption in November, but that timing has to be guided by when I get further input from the board, the research that's involved in that, before we then bring it forward.
Okay, but it looks like you're trying to finalize the program guidelines in October, next month. So, commissioners, while this is fresh on your mind, if you could digest it and, and send any feedback to the city administrator well in advance of, of the October deadline.
Well, let me just add a footnote to that.
Sure.
I, if, in, in, in concept, and based on, you know, further input from the board or reconsideration by the board, you know, this is not a program that you want to see move forward. I don't want to have staff expending the time and effort of putting together, you know, the detailed applications and all of that. There's a lot of back-end work that needs to be done to tee up a program, and if it's not something that is going to be supported by the board, I don't want to just layer staff with doing work for a program that is not going to get the board's support.
Understood. So, let, let me ask this question, is there enough sentiment to give direction to move forward with further consideration of this?
I'd like to see him move forward.
One, two, three, four. Okay. So, there's at least, I'm, I'm detecting there's at least enough interest in this program and trying to refine it to, to make it attractive. So, those who are interested, digest the materials before you, providing feedback, or if you have other questions we can answer ahead of the time, please send that to the city administrator.
Yeah, so, first thing I will do is send the presentation to each of you. And after you give further thought to specific things you would like to see us consider or like to be included, please send that to me. Or if you want to have a meeting, again, I am not the only staff person working on the program. We can bring the team and have a one-on-one meeting with you to help kind of flesh out the parts of the program that you would like to see included that are not included this morning. And we'll go back and do that re, research and then do a follow-up. And at the end of the day, once we get there, I will send out an update to the entire board on where we are and additional things that we've looked at based on input before we just, I don't want to put it on the agenda without having done the appropriate follow-up, so that you all will not be seeing the additional elements that have been added based on follow-up from this meeting. You won't see it for the first time when we get before you for adoption. So, I, I, I appreciate, I think we've had very good discussion, and that's exactly what will help inform and shape the program. We want it to, to be effective. We don't want to have the same experience that we currently have with the exemption program. We want one that will be effective and that will be utilized. And again, it will be a pilot. So, at the end of the two years, the board is in a different place, then it, it will sunset.
All right, very good. Any other questions on this item? Okay, in terms of Mayor's Matters, just a quick question, I don't know if Kevin or Victor's here. How, how do we fare with the, the king tides over the last weekend?
Well, we've had some flooding, some of the places where they have got tidal valves, we've also noticed that, I guess it's.
Uh, we have had some flooding with the king tides that are taking place. There are certain outfalls that we have not implemented the tidal valves on yet, which we're still in the process of doing, as well as we've also noticed that there's been some defects in some of the previously installed ones, which we're addressing. We think that there's some potential seals that need to be taken care of on the pipes and everything like that. So, we are, we're on top of that, and we are evaluating what the situation is on the currently installed ones, as well as reprioritizing the areas that we're going to focus on next. So, that's kind of where we are with that.
Do we have any plans to try to get some more funding for additional tidal valves?
Yes, we are currently working on getting an additional grant funding for some additional tidal valve money right now, so we, we do have that in, in process.
Okay, great, thank you for that update.
Okay.
Um, I don't have anything else on the Mayor's Matters, Commissioner?
Mayor, before we, we adjourn, I just have to, I don't want this to be lost on the board, you know, with the discussion that we just had, I want to thank you all for self-consciously leaning into excellence with action and purpose, because that's precisely what we just went through. So, now, I think you all may end up with a shirt as well. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Great. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Over the weekend, I received an email from Circuit that they were going to be changing their prices on October 1st between $1 and $4. And I, I, in many ways, I think that would help the program. I think the one thing that I hear about Circuit that people have to wait too long, and so they kind of give up, and I think a lot of times it's because people order a circuit, decide they don't want it, because it's free, they walk away, and then someone else that could be taking it is waiting. So, in many ways, I think probably charging is a good plan, but on the other hand, you know, we voted for, what I remember voting for, for the stopgap plan was a free program that would be, you know, taking the place of the free trolley. And so, I just want to understand better, I guess, what this means for the public? Is this now going to be more of an exclusive program where some people in the neighborhoods that we wanted to have as oppor, opportunity zones, you know, maybe don't want to have to pay $4 each way? And so, I guess I just want to understand better how this kind of came about and how it will be communicated to the public other than the, you know, the Circuit email, if there's, I don't know if there's anyone here that's working on it, probably Armando, but I just wanted to put it out there if we could have more detail about how that came into play. Thanks.
Do we have anyone here that could speak to that?
Armando is at a conference, and we can definitely follow, Kevin, can you answer?
I would just defer to Armando, we'll have.
Yes, we'll follow up with the response.
A, and generally speaking, where are we with that pilot? And I know we had an RFP we're working on to move from the pilot to a more permanent program, where are we with that whole process?
We are getting the, the RFQ finalized now. We hope to get that to procurement here within this, within the next couple of weeks so that we can finally get that out on the street. So, that's where we are with that. For the new mobility service provider.
Right, okay.
All right.
All right. Meanwhile, if you could report, not only Commissioner Fox, but even to the other commissioners about what's going on with the price increase from Circuit?
Will do.
Anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.